I think Craig is going to get a bunch of funding to get that way handy.
I hope so.
Is it where, is it where it's called?
Dave.
Yeah.
He owns Chase and Sandy.
In a corner of the Verizon.
Yeah. They have leadership in the house. And Dave said this in between those two. Charlotte wasn't building your bathroom, like, they can.
They can.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're here tonight to hear a request on appeal, a decision made by the Randolph County Planning Board. Chairman Frye is not with us tonight. He is attending a family matter down in Atlanta. Nothing serious, but he's not going to be able to be with us tonight. So there'll be four of us here tonight to make a decision on this appeal. The way this will proceed is we'll have our planning and zoning director, Tony Cattle, to come and present the application. Then we'll have a public hearing that will allow the applicant to make comments, have a presentation if you'd like. And then any other one that's supportive of the application will be able to speak. Then we'll have time for those that are in opposition to the application to have their time to present information and speak to the board. We'll reserve some time for the applicant at the end to address any questions that may have arisen during the discussion. And then we'll close the public hearing and have discussion amongst the board and make a decision. Since this is a, there'll be two of us, well, four of us here. It'll require a three to one majority for the application to be approved. Usually we have five with an odd number, so it'll take, will be three to approve the application. So, Tanya, if you would come and present the application to us.
Good evening, commissioners. We're going to get started tonight. I don't know if our power point is the time, but. Tell the break light comes on. There you go.
Might want to pull it a little bit closer to you.
It's a height thing, right? Better?
That's better.
Great, okay. So I do have a short PowerPoint prepared for you all. You all have packets with lots of information provided for tonight. I will start with, there is a short memo in the front of your packet kind of telling you about a little bit of background. On August 8th, 2023, Randolph County Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the request by Gladden Forest Equity LLC out of Raleigh. It's case number 2023-1844 to rezone 2.2 acres beside 1293 Green Farm Road, Nasa Back Creek Township. Gives you a tax ID. This is a secondary growth area in the county. And the rezoning is from residential agriculture to highway commercial conditional district, specifically to allow retail store. As for the site plan that you all have, after lengthy hearing, the planning board voted to approve the request with a split vote, five to approve, two to disapprove. From here, we'll go ahead and move into the PowerPoint for y'all tonight. There we go. So Randolph County Board of Commissioners will hold a duly published and notified legislative hearing on the request by Stuart Swann, I apologize if I mispronounce anything, Ashboro, North Carolina, and the request to appeal the decision of the Randolph County Planning Board to rezone 2.2 acres out of the 9.52. Y'all see that 9.52 on your maps as well. On Caraway Mountain Road beside 1293 Green Farm Road, again, Back Creek Township. We're going from residential agriculture to highway commercial conditional district specific to this site plan. Next you'll find the maps that you're seeing. The property is currently zoned, the light industrial on the front, that's that light purple color. And then the back yellow portion, that is 9.53 acres. And only 2.2 of that is actually looking to be rezoned. We'll move into the rest of the PowerPoint to show you where that 2.2 is. And there you see, this is the site plan that was given to us by the developer of the intentions of the site. And only this section of the site will be the 2.2 acres. Should this application go through and be finalized, they will give us the dimensions of that. And you'll see on the maps that it will go down to just the 2.2 for highway commercial. It will leave the rest of that property as RA. And it's not intended for all of that acreage to be actually into the highway commercial. So here you go. This kind of gives you an overall, probably a little bit harder to see than one of them. Let's see. Not the button I wanted. Definitely shopping TV. Okay, so you can see the rectangular a bit north of the building at the intersection. I think most of y'all have these in your packet anyway. That kind of lays out where that 2.2 acres will be, what they're proposing. It kind of shows you the rest of the property that is not going to be rezoned or is not requested and would stay RA. Here we go. This is some additional information. It kind of shows you where the septic system is going on the south side of the property, the structure itself, and then of course, the parking areas on the property that they're intending to develop. This also is another part of the plan, kind of showing you some of the drainage and some of the dumpster area and things, the driveway, of what they're intending on doing for the new development. And this is just kind of overlaying onto the aerials. They're showing you some of the landscaping on the north side of the property as well. And it's kind of where their building is structured. Looks like they're doing two layers of trees for the landscape buffer. And here we go. There's just some maps that's showing you, again, the property there, what's across the street and what's down at the intersection. Kind of zoomed out, and the green overlay areas, of course, are those are environmental protected areas. And you see, there's a little bit on this property which they will not get into with the 2.2 acres. And here we go again. That's showing you the aerials with the environmental overlay. And again, you're not going to get into that where they're proposing the rezoning. Kind of just an overall view of where we are in the secondary area for growth management and where this location is. And these are just some pictures of when we went out to site to post of what you can see kind of at that intersection. All of y'all are probably pretty familiar with this anyway. And that's the end of our presentation.
Any questions for Tanya? Okay.
Thank you.
Hang around. All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. At this point in time, I invited the applicant to come and make any comments or presentation that you'd like to.
I'm H.R. Gallimore with Remax Central Realty. I represent the applicant of this request. It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Vice Chairman, County Commissioners, and Hal, you too. So just to take a few minutes and we'll hash over kind of what we did at the planning board. This particular applicant has done their market forecast. They see a need in this area. They take their efforts quite seriously. One of the things that I brought out in our previous meeting, there are a lot of community, little community grocery stores, if you will, that no longer exist in the county. There's actually two within close proximity of this property. One on Green Farm at the end of Green Farm and Old Lexington Road. The other at the end of Caraway Mountain Road, as it is in Old Lexington Road. There's always been a need. There were several in town along this corridor. We had Fancy Gap, Curb Market, Paul's Curb Market, Maydell's. All these are going on at the same time. There's always been consumer need. And I think more now than ever, we've got a lot of fuel prices that are up. Sometimes you just want a loaf of bread, a gallon of milk. Sometimes you don't have to drive so far. It's a benefit to the neighborhood and the surrounding area. I'd like to also point out, the technical review committee took a hard look at this. And I know you have that in your packet. But just to go over that, it said that it meets all the requirements, both the ordinance and the plan. It's consistent, reasonable with public interest. And should be, in this case, they were recommending approval by the county planning board. They went on to say in their, in their report that there was a good bit of possibility of job creation and that it was consistent with travel distances for local communities and so forth. You'll hear from some folks about lighting. I do want to mention, this has got the full cutoff on the lighting, which means the lighting doesn't travel outside the property for lighting. One other thing I think is notable, you're going to hear a good bit of conversation tonight about these kinds of retail centers in general and maybe the safety and this, that, and the other. I don't recollect there ever being an issue in Randolph County. We've got several, if there are any, I'm not aware of it. I will tell you that this particular user has over 20,000 locations nationwide. So when I say that, sure, there's going to be an issue somewhere, just like there is in hospitals and schools and libraries and post offices. There's always somebody that can find something that happens somewhere. But we think it's a reasonable request. I would like to leave it open for any questions moving forward, answer any concerns that might come up after I speak. And I will say, the developer is here and so, as well as the engineering firm to be, can answer some additional questions. Any questions from you guys at this point?
Don't think so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, introduce yourself, name and address. And I think is the clipboard there to sign in?
Can we leave it up here?
Yeah. You can just lay it there on the side of the table. That way people can utilize it. Just want to make sure everybody gets their name spelled correctly and in the record properly.
Christian Vestal, 150 South Federal Street. Represent the applicant as their engineer of record for the civil site development of the site. To go over a brief few points that came up during the planning board hearing. And then at that time, there were some questions regarding if the site was adequate, if there was adequate soils. There has since been, and currently ongoing, at the time of the meeting, a soil survey has been studied, septic has been designed, and a system has been actually, application, I believe, is at the county now. So there's a design system that will work. And there is also a well location that will work for this site. So that box has been checked. As far as the landscaping, that question came up regarding meeting the intent of the ordinance, the requirement of the ordinance. The revised plan does show that buffer there. I think it's a level three buffer required by the county with these two land uses that has been proposed, proposed and will be installed. Another item that came up was DOT concerns possibly with future increased traffic or, you know, different things that require turn lane. This has been sent to the district office. They have sent their preliminary comments. A formal application has not been submitted, but of course, will be required for the approval from the county. The current finding from the DOT is that there will not be any improvements required based on the limited traffic on that particular location. So a few more items of concern that came up at the planning board meeting, I believe that may need to be cleared up. They possibly were with the presentation that's already been given to you guys. But the surrounding land is not landlocked. And that was a question at the planning board meeting, but that is not the case. Regarding the wetlands, those are off of the 2.2 acre site. It is on the remaining 9.52 acre tract, not the 2.2 acre tract that is going to be cut out and rezoned. And then, already mentioned, but DOT has observed the driveway location. So are there any questions from the engineering side or standpoint that I can answer at this time?
So you haven't applied for the permit?
Correct, have not applied, but have sent the preliminary plan to the M&amp;K out. Response is a verbal approval.
Right, okay. Any questions for Mr. Vestal? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Vanners, 3825 Barrett Drive in Raleigh. I am the developer with Gladden Forest Equity. And I just kind of wanted to touch on a few things I think there will be talking about tonight. And I would like to reserve some time at the end if we need to. We've been a preferred developer for Dollar General for about 15 years. We've done most of the new stores, actually all the new stores that you've seen pop up around Randolph County in the last 15 years, we developed. I think there's a kind of a common misconception that the developers choose the sites. We don't just go out there throwing spaghetti against the wall and just hoping, you know, they'll take it. Dollar General has a market planning division that they spend 12 to 18 months at least prior to sending it to us, doing their market research on the site. The team puts together trade areas in the territories. And they know where their customers are. Like it or not, if you shop with a credit card, Walmart, Walgreens, the retailer knows where you live. They know your shopping patterns. They know, you know, what you're buying. That's just the reality of it. But this area is, has been denoted a trade area. The, there is a definite underrepresented group that's not here that lives in that area that is a Dollar General shopper. And Dollar General has notified that. And so they've asked us to come and try to build a store there. These stores by design draw from smaller areas, two to four miles. We hear all the time, well, we don't need another dollar store because there's one six miles down the road. Well, when they create these trade areas, they locate the stores in convenient locations, short drive times, so that their customers don't need to drive six miles down the road to the next store. They drive one mile to this store. So their turnaround time for buying convenient goods every day is a mile or two. So the next item that comes up and probably will come up is about traffic. So these stores, as I mentioned, they do not draw from a large area. They're not regional draws like Walmart. People aren't driving, you know, from different towns to go to these stores. That's why they spread them out. And that's why they have their smaller trade areas. So these stores are just serving the traffic that is already inherent to that community. These are folks coming, stopping on the way to work, on the way from work, to pick up a couple of goods every night. Another item that came up during the planning board meeting was the discussion that the stores tend to promote crime in the area. Well, I kind of have to tread kind of lightly when we talk about this topic because I don't want to downplay any kind of crime. And, but as H.R. mentioned, Dollar General has 20,000 stores in 49 states and two countries. So if you're going to, if you're going to go looking for an issue, that's a very big pool to find something. Part of their market planning process is they rate every site on the list. So when I say a list, each, as a developer, they send us a list every year with these trade areas with latitude, longitude coordinates. They say, this is the area, this is the bullet point we would like to be in. Every single one of those bullet points has a crime index. It's from zero to 400 or something like that. Obviously, the higher the number, the higher the crime. And that is based upon the crime statistics for the area. I just want to mention that Sophia, we call this Project Sophia. That's what they're calling it. Has, of our list, has over 80 trade areas. Sophia has the lowest crime index on the entire list. So there's no reason why one should be able to say, in my opinion, that a new store in this location would create any more crime than the existing convenience store that's been there for years. So we don't believe that, the store doesn't create any crime. It would be, the crime would be either existing there or not existing there. So I don't have anything else right now. Would like to reserve time later if need be. If anybody has any questions, be happy to have to answer them.
Any questions? I would say in Randolph County, it's Sophia.
I knew I was going to say, I've done that before and I.
You're not, you're not the first, so Sophia.
Well, I called Rowan County, Rowan County one time and that meeting was over.
Rowan, that's Rowan, yeah, so.
I apologize.
No, no problem. It's Sophia. You're not the first one to do that, so. All right, anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Okay. If not, we'll hear from folks that would be opposed to the rezoning. If you just want to come up, we'll take you one more. If you state your name and once you get signed in, state your name and where you live.
Yes, sir.
If that gets in your way, just put it on the table there. It would work too.
Okay, actually, I'm here to read a letter from someone who couldn't be here. And he asked me to bring it. If that's okay. I respectfully ask that you add.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry. Ronnie Alffrey.
Where you live?
1510 Caraway Summit Trail, Sophie.
Okay.
Or Sophia, however you want to say it. I call it Sophie, but anyway.
Sophie.
Yeah. All right, let me start over. I respectfully ask that you would add my voice to the opposition of a permit for the construction, I'm having to slide back forward, of a Dollar General store at the intersection of Caraway Mountain and Green Farm Road. I share the concerns voiced by the citizens in this area. Specifically, I am very concerned about safety at the intersection. Since for many years, I traveled this road twice a day and have seen many near wrecks. And I also am aware of actually some serious wrecks that have occurred at this intersection. So I do not feel that the increased traffic would be a positive thing for this area. And it's signed Andrew Gregson, an Alkali District Attorney.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Stuart Swan. I live at 1304 Green Farm Road in Ashboro, which is directly across the field from where they would like to build this dollar store. And I have what it would say here, so if you'll bear with me. All right, so first and foremost, it threatens local businesses. We all know that. When dollar stores open, they always cut into local businesses, the sales. They use their hefty market muscle to lose money indefinitely until their competitors have no option other than to fold. These stores generally produce around $2 million per year that most likely comes out of the register of local businesses. They also create food deserts by making it difficult for a community to support. I'm not sure where I'm, I'm a little bit nervous, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
To support adequate fresh food options. When looking for new locations, dollar stores simply look for locations with cheap space and low to moderate income residents. By siphoning off sales that would support grocery stores and otherwise healthy food options, they create food deserts. It is inadequate for the nutritional needs of even the smallest communities. Also, studies have shown health conditions such as diabetes, hypertension, and obesity are strongly linked to poverty and relying on cheap, low-quality food. On top of that, dollar stores create fewer jobs and pay lower wages. They hire less people and pay them poorly. 92% of dollar store employees earn less than $15 per hour, the worst rate of 66 large sector firms in 2019. The average annual salary for Dollar General workers was $14,571, while former CEO Todd Vazos earned 968 times that amount. Store managers earn around $40,000 and routinely work long hours. But due to their manager status, they are not eligible for overtime pay. This I've seen firsthand as my mother was a manager at a Dollar General store. With their poor salaries, it is hard to obtain quality employees, continuously causing management to work open to close, getting called in on their days off because someone didn't show up. If by some small chance they did get a good employee, they would immediately promote them to management, exposing them to the same fate. What kind of message does that send to our young, potential productive members of society? If I work hard and be responsible, my reward will be long hours with no compensation? That don't sound like a driving force to a better economy. Dollar stores also rely heavily on taxpayers to subsidize their employees. A 2020 study by the U.S. Government Accountability Office, them among the top companies with the greatest number of employees receiving SNAP and non-disabled, non-elderly Medicaid benefits. They also, they also extract wealth from within the community. Locally owned businesses spend a large amount of their profits locally. They pay rent, buy supplies, hire accountants, lawyers, and other professionals, engage cleaning and trash collection services, utilities, property and sales tax, local school, civic, and charitable. Hire adequate staff. The list of things I don't see dollar stores doing goes on and on. But it's not just the owners of small businesses that benefit. They support not only their own household, but their employees' house as well. Only a modest percentage of a dollar store profits remain in the community. They flow back to the corporation. And then the corporation spends it on expansion, shareholder dividends, stock buybacks, to beef up their share prices, of course. Even their rent payment usually go out of area. Developers that specialize in developing and leasing buildings to dollar stores, the community ultimately loses local wealth. Wealth and gains nothing in return. Studies have shown about 45 to 60% of dollar stores spent in local-owned businesses recirculates within, versus only 14 to 30% spent in chain stores. It doesn't stop there. Local government also suffers greatly. Initially, they may be an upside in tax revenue. But once dollar stores push out their other businesses and their, their tax revenue is all that remains, that number can go down significantly as the overall income is reduced. There has also been cases where they have gotten utility bills discounted, which cost even more in overall revenues. Dollar stores drive down commercial property tax revenue and can have negative effects on residential property values. The increase of municipal expenses, police, fire, sewer, and other municipal services to these traffic-intensive, crime-vulnerable stores. Now that we have the big elephant out of, on the table, money, which let's face it, many times is the greatest driving force in most things, unfortunately, but true. Most of Americans have given up on camaraderie and compassion for the dollar. Let's talk about safety. When they're that, with inadequate staffing and store security equipment and a high volume of cash transactions, they become targets. Understaffing and the piles of often unplaced merchandise make it impossible for employees to watch for shoplifters that are many times under the influence, which makes them an even greater danger due to the unpredictability and watch the register at the same time. The loss of a multimillion-dollar chains merchandise is not what concerns me the most. It's the danger that it imposes on the neighbors and children, friends, family, and others within my community. A Clemson study shows dollar stores are more likely than any other to attract crime and are significantly correlated with public order crimes, property crimes such as vandalism and violent crimes. According to the Gun Violence Archive, 156 people were killed and 329 more were injured at dollar stores between 2014 and 2019. And where do you think people are running to, to try and find shelter after committing a crime? Our woods, our sheds, our houses. Our woods, our sheds, our houses, perhaps even stealing vehicles? Or... Hold on. Or intense situations using a member of my beloved community as a shield while attempting to escape justice. But again, not just we, the people, are in jeopardy. They often choose sites zoned for agriculture, agricultural use, which is what is being done in this case, whose roads are rarely designed to accommodate the traffic volume or to support the weight of delivery trucks. These trucks are typically longer than 50 feet and weigh close to 80,000 pounds. The site they have chosen could be risk to the drivers as there is a blind curve just as you exit for the move when forgetting cheap land. They often purchase parcels with inadequate natural drainage or stormwater management. Infrastructure, these asphalt-paved parking lots shed water roughly 27,000 gallons per inch of rainfall on a typical one-acre parking lot. That water needs to be absorbed by adjacent land funneled into a municipal storm sewer or temporarily retained and filtered to remove oil, grease, and other pollutions. If it isn't, it can trigger water pollution, erosion, and flooding. There are at least two ponds that could be directly affected by pollution of flooding in this area that could affect wildlife and homes. For example, on the land directly behind mine is a natural runoff pond that is, if flooded, could cause danger, damage to the dam, those damaging at least one home below it with a large influx of water this may cause. And just as a personal concern, these stores target elderly people as they are typically on fixed income, undereducated people, people that are already in poverty due to disabilities, whether it's mental or physical, people that are doing all they can just to survive this economy. All of these people are operating under a lie that Dollar Stores have created to make their brand sound as though it's trying to help with lower prices and accessibility, when in fact it is greed, deception, and deflation. They want to strive for their overhead to be at the absolute minimum with total disregard to safety, community, and overall well-being of people, nature, and wildlife. They claim to have cheaper products, when in fact, there's just less of it in the package. It's cheaply made or simply doesn't work, causing people to purchase more of a product to reach the same desired result. They treat us like prey and attack the infrastructure and identity of a community. Those of us that choose to live in urban areas are expected to just stand idly by while the country life we love is slowly engulfed by city limits, which seemingly have no end to the destruction of our lifestyles, forcing us to abide by city laws and regulations, pay higher taxes while our land values drop, or pack up and move from sometimes generations of family homes. Although all the facts and data on financial and safety are very valid, first and foremost, I hope you will take into consideration the devastating effects this can have on our young people, our community, and all of my friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Who else would like to speak? You need to view one next question.
Where his house was.
Ms. Cattle, could you pull up the map? Ms. Swan, could you?
With the red dots on it where he should.
Ms. Swan, could you point out on the map where your house is, where you live?
I think it's that blue, dark blue section. No, the white right beside.
It's just about there.
Yeah, walk up there. Yeah, walk up and point if you would, so we can... Okay.
It's that house beside the...
Okay.
...manufacturing.
Okay, okay.
Appreciate it.
Across from the back.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I don't have anything prepared as far as, you know, something...
State your name and where you live.
Jacob Collins. I live at 1445 Old County Farm Road. It's, I would say, probably 400 yards from where the store would be built. Like I said, I don't have anything prepared or anything like that to say, but as far as concerns go, yes, safety is a big issue. There's millions of dollars in lawsuits of OSHA violations against Dollar General right now. Since 2017, there's been around $20 million worth of OSHA lawsuits. So as far as safety goes for the employee, I wouldn't say that it's a very good factor there. Also, like he stated, the employees, often when you walk into these stores, you don't see an employee at the register. They're somewhere in the back of the store stocking a shelf because there's only one employee working. That falls into... There's a couple of circumstances that causes that. It's, you know, we're in a time of people not wanting to work or not finding a good job, Dollar General not paying their employees enough. That's definitely going to promote not having enough people to, you know, accommodate. Another thing is safety outside of the store, also for the employee. There's always a bunch of trash. Just about any Dollar General you drive by, there's trash everywhere. In the parking lot, there's a Connex or a shipping container full of overstock because they don't sell, you know? They have a bunch of stuff that either sits in the floor or they sit in the shipping container. The employee goes out and gets stuff out of the shipping container, trash works its way into the parking lot, works its way into our yards, you know? There's a lot of wildlife right there. You know, the more trash in somebody's yard, the more trash in the field behind the Dollar General, the more that the wildlife, squirrels, deer, anything, there's a pond right behind it, fish in the pond, you know? There's a lot of different factors there that can definitely affect the community and wildlife and everything else. I personally have a pretty close friend. He was a manager at a Dollar General. He got assaulted while he was closing up the Dollar General. Got assaulted so bad, he was in the hospital for a while and had a pretty lengthy lawsuit about it. And, you know, it was three-on-one pretty much when he got assaulted. He was closing the store, told him to leave. They didn't leave. When he turned around to walk away, calling 911 in the meantime, got assaulted and hurt very, very bad. As far as, you know, the tax value and everything else, I can't speak a whole lot on that because I haven't done a whole lot of research on it, but, you know, the small stores, the mom-and-pop stores in the community, that's what keeps the community going. We don't want any more... It's been a safe community for a long time, and, you know, Tabernacle and Sophia and Bat Creek and the surrounding area, it's been a safe community. We don't want any more crime. Statistics do show that Dollar Generals and Dollar Stores do bring in crime. The store that's been across the road from where they're planning on building the Dollar Store, it's been there for years. Obviously, it's not going to draw in crime if it's been there before the crimes got there. You know, it's been there for years. Everybody knows that store. Everybody knows it's a mom-and-pop store. It doesn't sell large-brand item stuff besides maybe a Mountain Dew or Pepsi. It sells gas. It's a help to the community. You know, I see a gas station staying afloat, helping the community more. You know, if Johnny needs gas for his lawnmower, I'd rather drive a mile for gas for my lawnmower than I would for, you know, a gallon of milk whenever there's a store. Like I said, in Tabernacle, there's a store in Hillsville, there's a store at Cedar Square Road that's been there. The one at Cedar Square Road, whenever they first opened it, I remember that they couldn't even keep it staffed, and I don't know that it stays staffed. Actually, my girlfriend's mother was shopping in there one day on her way home, and it was not even close to closing time. I want to say it was like seven o'clock. She walks to the back of the store to get stuff that she was needing to bring home, walks back up to the front of the store. The doors were closed, the doors were locked. Whoever was working that day locked up and left, did not care. So, I mean, there's just a couple points. I could go on and on about it, but that's all I have.
Hello, everyone. Namaste. I'm from India, and I own a gas station at 3712 Caraway Mountain Road in Sophia. I recently bought this property in March 2023. I'm nervous, as you can see. I have... I have been in this gas station business for 25-plus years, and I'm a victim of, not a Dollar General, but similar to Dollar General, Family Dollar on Rendeman Road at 5614 Rendeman Road. There's a Family Dollar that opened up on Highway 62 and the intersection of Rendeman Road. Right across from it, there was a convenience store. They couldn't survive. They had a tenant off and on, and they shut it down. I have a store, Village Mart, on the same road, and I couldn't survive no more than three years, and I shut the door down. Luckily, I have a drive-thru store that makes a mortgage payment for their particular location. So I'm a small mom-and-pop, a store owner. I love small town. I have businesses in small town, like Prospect Hill and Burlington, and I feel like they're targeting small mom-and-pop guys. They opened up a Dollar General there, Family Dollar there, and we are seeing the big effect because we compete with them. And it's hard to compete with big-box chain stores because we, you know, a small mom-and-pop buy, you know, we cannot buy at the big prices or so. So I couldn't make the first... You know, I was not able to come to the first meeting here, but as soon as I found out, I was nervous and I was terrified. I had no idea that this was going to happen. But I mean, I went in there. I have tried to change the old mechanical pump into a better pump so, you know, people who live in the local have that access of in and out easily. I'm also trying to improve the site within itself so, you know, people have a better experience of coming to the gas station. Because I've been in this business for 25 years, and I love the small, you know, gas station where I can go and get to know the community. So I mean, this will impact big on my business side and also family that I got to feed, that are employees who also live there. And I have closed my stores. I mean, the example I set on the Rendeman, you know? So I urge everyone to rethink before you put a box store down there. That's all I can say.
Could you sign in?
Sure.
Name and address. Thank you.
62.
Okay. 62. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the rezoning?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Don Murray. I'm at 1526 Old County Farm Road, just walking distance from that intersection. I think I'm even on the map. Anyway, I don't have a big preparatory prepared thing either. Our family's been in this area for 30 years, and personally, I've been in this area 10 years, and I've watched over all that period of time, the area changed and grew, and it's become a really nice residential region. It's, you know, granted, it was a fast road to go to the Speedway with originally when I saw the area. It had a couple businesses around that was it, but it's grown, it's changed. Old County Farm Road, the one that we live on, is, has, I think it's 61 driveways on it now. It's become a real solid place. They just added another one last week. So the area's grown quite a bit, and people like it for what it is. It's a good neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood. And as others have said, there's a lot of traffic because of it. That road's in the process of being improved. It's going to become a lot faster road once they finish doing the repavement on it. It's a major commuter route, and drawing extra traffic into the area is not going to help with our safety at all. We have mailboxes across the street on that road. Have you ever tried to cross the road when somebody's going 65 miles an hour down it? It's pretty rough, especially with blind corners, driveways that can't be seen, things like that. I'm just talking about our personal role of county farm. We're off of that intersection. The corner by the Dollar General is, I've been almost hit coming out of the gas station from that corner so many times, it's not funny. There's going to be issues in that spot. That's not really my big issue. I'm concerned about that, but my big issue is having a crime magnet in the area. I work for the Transportation and Security Administration, so I'm dealing with threats and risks all day long, and I see home as a sanctuary. I come home to a safe place, a place where there's not a lot of crime, a place that's in a good neighborhood, a place where you can trust your neighbors, you know what's going on. You see somebody on the side of the road, you ask if they need help, you don't worry about seeing them. And we don't need that to change in our neighborhood. We need our neighborhood to stay a safe neighborhood, keep those county statistics up where they are right now. And that's my big issue with all of this, and I would appeal to this board to reject that zoning change. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Barbara Murray, 1526 Old County Farm Road. Now, we'd sent the board a packet of information. You guys got that, yeah?
No.
Was it entered into the record then?
Yes.
Because I can save you all the time. Because I'm sure you don't want to be up till midnight. Basically, just to hit a few high points then on that, I think I see this as an inappropriate zoning. All the other Dollar Stores I've seen in the area are either in fully-developed areas like, say, Main Street in Ashboro. They're in a food plaza, like a Food Lion Plaza, you know, also, you know, off of 64, 49. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm dyslexic that way. But in any case, all the ones I know in the area are either fully clear, the one in Tabernacle, which by the way, the office manager of the Dollar General was beaten within an inch of his life, was Tabernacle, so it's within Randolph County. And basically, yeah, it's like Dollar Stores, there's been a lot of studies done. If you wanted to Google "crime in Dollar Stores," no, I agree. Statistically, if you have more stores, you will have more crime, but good reputable studies have shown that particularly petty larceny and certain minor kinds of assault are more than doubled with Dollar Stores, not just Dollar General. I mean, it's just a business model. The business model is extractive. They don't build a store every five miles to serve the customers. They serve it because there's value to be extracted. That's what the studies are about. It's reasonably enough for a corporation. They're studying for their own benefit, figuring that if the community doesn't object, well, then great. But the areas they do move into do not seem to improve from this. In 2019, at a stockholder meeting, the CEO talking to the stockholders, it was brought up that safety features at Dollar General were a concern, and they said, "You don't have good, high-quality maintained lighting. You don't have surveillance cameras that the police can actually use. What would you like to say about that?" And the CEO's answer was, he says, "I see my responsibilities maximizing stockholder interest." He says, "So I..." He says, so I'm really not in favor of anything that would detract from that. Meaning, if it's a problem for the community, I couldn't care less. I'm a listed Fortune Five Hundred, not Fortune Five Hundred, but I'm listed, you know, on Wall Street. It's like, I have my own index number. I'm a fifty-five billion dollar a year company, which is great. I mean, fine, if you want to shop at a dollar store, absolutely knock your socks off. But the point is, this does not serve the local area. You cannot walk in our neighborhood. Well, if you have a death wish, you could. I mean, there's very narrow margin to the road and very steep culverts, you know, for drainage. So, people drive everywhere and you're not driving one mile to get milk. If you're coming on your way home from work, you're coming from Randleman, Greensboro, or Ashboro. In the process of which, you're passing two Wal-Mart's, four Food Lions, and a, and a Lowe's grocery store. Plus, the Little Sitco, which I guarantee you, no intelligent businessman would have bought a business knowing he was going to be going into competition with a dollar store across the street. So, I feel bad for him because it's not cheap to buy a store. And the original owner, I had talked to him and he said he didn't know either. He would never have made a sale to somebody and used him in that way. So, I would say it's inappropriate zoning, okay? As a precedent, it wouldn't be a very good one. It's unsuitable because it leaves a lot of vegetation between this dollar store and the neighbors. Hughes Lane goes back that way. The neighbors there that I've talked to are deeply concerned. They figure that they, if larceny is a thing, if drug deals near Dollar General seem to be, or dollar stores in general, seem to be a thing, that makes them sort of a food group. You know, a local shopping area for revenue, for people who feel a need for a little bit of cash flow. Obviously, that's not a happy thought. Mr. and Mrs. Swan who brought the suit, they have small children right across the street. You know, not a happy thought, right? Because the statistics do show, Clemson University does study, there's a more than two-hundred dollar increase, a two-hundred percent increase in crime within the Dollar General environment, okay? Not always murder and stuff like that, certainly not, but petty larceny, assault, drugs in particular. You know, seems to be, I've talked to policemen and they say that if they want something to do, they'll go to the dollar store and just look in the parking lot and see what's going on. Which, if, fine, if you're in an area that's zoned for that, fine, you have the resources to deal with it. I think at the last hearing, we felt very unhappy because the board showed no familiarity whatsoever with the area in question. Half of them didn't know where Caraway Mountain Road was, so they obviously couldn't have visited the site. They didn't Google Dollar Generals. There's obviously no difference between a generic small business and a dollar store. So, there was zero intellectual curiosity there. That's pretty fatal if you're a zoning board. I mean, we're, we're growing. I mean, Randolph County is definitely growing and it's, it's the wave of the future. But I think we want to make intelligent choices about what we permit and where. And just approving anything that comes down the line saying, oh, sure, it's great, you know, isn't. It just isn't. Because dollar stores aren't a benefit to the community. They understaff, they pay their people poorly, they don't really care about them. I mean, the gentleman whose friend got hurt, the reason he didn't come and testify is, they stonewalled paying his medical bills for a year, okay? He was out of pocket for a year on what should have been a straight cop suit to pay his bills. They made him sign documents saying he couldn't testify, he couldn't address someone, he couldn't write a letter, he couldn't go online. That's the new partner you want for your neighborhood? That's the business model we want? I don't think so. And that's just shabby behavior. And that's a man who was doing what he was told to do. He was told to take out the trash after the store closed so you wouldn't take away from customer time. He did that. It was dark. You know, the rest of it was, luckily, he had a phone and hit nine-one-one or he would have been dead. Because they don't keep you in the hospital for weeks and weeks after beating for nothing. I mean, he almost died. So, let's talk about property value loss. There's been plenty of studies done on that too. The lowest figure I saw was six percent loss of property value near a dollar store. Not just Dollar General. It's a business model. I'm not picking on them in particular. And I don't think we want that. But a couple that had to leave, they had a doctor's appointments, they had to leave. But they're building a new house right across the street. They already sunk their life savings into a house in what they thought was going to be a nice area. They were definitely not planning on looking at a dollar store across the street. They didn't invest their life savings in that. And like I said, again, if you want to shop at a dollar store, you have every right in the world to. Four-point-seven miles away, you can find one. Within five miles, you can find two more. Within six, you've got four or five more after that. I mean, it's crazy. We're not, this is not a benefit to the community. This is a benefit to a corporation. And if you decide to permit it and you obviously have the power to do that, I don't think it would be a good decision. We're coming into a window where we're going to have to really carefully evaluate as a community what we want to look like when we grow up. We're going to have more people. Yeah, great. Where are we going to put them? What kind of zoning are we going to do? What kind of stores are we going to invite into our community and how are we going to structure that? And I think personally, although this is obviously personal to me because I live almost next door, I think I'd like to see us as a community start thinking seriously about what we want Randolph County to look like. Because we know change is coming. If you're proactive about it, you might like the results. If you're not, I guarantee you won't. Because the big money comes in, the big money gets what it wants. If you allow permits like this, which are anomalous, if there's no, basically no precedent that I can see in driving area for this placement of a type of a dollar store, you pretty much created a legal precedent for another corporation to come in and say, oh, you did it for them, why not for me? I mean, what the heck? I mean, you know, and that's the way it goes. And obviously, my experience with planning and zoning is not in North Carolina. But I do know the precedent law is in fifty states. It's like what you lay, lay down as a precedent is what rules. If you lay down good, clear laws about what you want or statutes by county or by town and you enforce them, you know, uniformly, you're almost bulletproof. People can sue you, but the judges go, nah, you got in a standing. I mean, what? You couldn't go to town hall and read the regs? It's on you. Sorry you spent money for a hundred acres you can't use. Tough tarts, you know? Personally, I'd like that to be the way it goes, that we decide and then we choose the best that works for us. This I do not feel is good for us. It is increasing crime, increase in traffic, lowers property value. I see no benefit to local community at all. I mean, this is not walking distance for anybody. If you're anywhere on a road, you're driving, you know? And if you're driving in the car already going to work, you're passing all those other stores I mentioned. So, I would personally, oh, I haven't the time, respectfully request that the board would deny this petition.
Okay, anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, Bob Thomas, three-five-nine-eight, Caraway Mountain Road. Pretty much, we don't want it. I think that's the goal here.
I'm pretty sure they...
What, twenty, twenty people to three people? Just stating, I'm pretty sure they're not going to be shopping there. I'm pretty sure all these people are taking time out of their day because we don't want it in our neighborhood. One's going to sell it, one's going to design it, and one's going to build it. Did I catch that right? That's what they're here for. We are here to be against it. And I think it's open to showcase. I would hope. He talks about burning fuel. This guy's got to walk three-hundred foot. He ain't going to burn no fuel. He's going to walk out of his house three-hundred feet. Do y'all want to walk out three-hundred foot and buy something at the Dollar General from your house? These, these people don't. I don't either, and I'm further away. I mean, you're murdering these people's values, these homes. I mean, it's right across the road, three-hundred foot. I mean, if it goes through, I mean, I think the value of their home is horrible. I wouldn't buy it. Would you? Do we need a Dollar General area? Yes, no. I don't know. But if we do, how about not putting it, you know, get it a half a mile from somebody's house? I think, I mean, I think that makes better sense than three-hundred foot from a man's house. We, I don't want it, plain and simple. I don't know. We don't want an area, that's all I know. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Ma'am?
I've got a couple of questions about, unfortunately, I was only a couple of rows back, but I had a hard time hearing. So, a lot of this, I've not been able to hear, but have just tried to. With the same, same situation with the last meeting, but that's my fault. I want to talk about a couple of these pictures or at least question some things that whether, I don't know whether they were specifically mentioned or not, or talked about, if I can walk through here. When you're looking at, I don't know. When you're looking at this picture right here, I understand what they're talking about to be where they're putting the, the store is right here, or is it right here? I don't know. Because when you flip back and I think... You want more? I don't want it. Okay, so...
That's all right.
So, the question is, where are those, whatever this is right here, I assume is some sort of a buffer?
That's a buffer, I believe, yes.
Is that right now where there is a driveway? That's what I, there's a driveway right there that comes to access this land right here on this property. So, where is that in relation to this picture right here? Because I can't figure that out.
No, there are trees on the other side. There are woods on the side.
There's a tree right over here, that's on that land.
Probably what, what I would suggest is, tell us all your questions and then... Well, hold on, just let me, let me finish. Just tell us all your questions. I'm going to write them down. And then the applicant will have the opportunity to address those questions.
I haven't had the opportunity to address that again because then that kind of...
Well, we're not going to go back and forth all night?
I'm not trying to.
Okay, but if you want to give us all the questions, I mean, yeah, I mean...
Okay, so here's a question. Is that where the driveway is? I'm seeing a bunch of head-shaking notes. So, where is the driveway so I can understand? Because my land, and I forgot to mention this, I apologize, I'm standing on Cannon. I live at thirty-eight oh five, Caraway Mountain Road, which is directly beside this property. Mine runs up to it. So, that's why my question, I have such a question here because everybody's looking at this land, I mean, you're thinking it's a buffer or whatever, it's really not, it's my land. And now, I have no opportunity, which I intended on redoing some of that and taking some of the street down and clearing that out. Don't want to do that now. Dollar General is going to be there. That's a high sore knee and more availability for somebody to travel if they want to do it in time. It's my land, even easier than they're going to have now. So, this is all mine. This is all mine. I live right here, and this is what I question. So, on top of that, you've got somebody that's right across the street over here. I mean, really technically, I guess he's closer than I am. Of course, I know he was the he who used that here. That was part of my question as to where that's specifically going to be on a piece of land and where the buffer is. My other question is, this land right here, and I believe more of it over here, does not hurt. So, if we're talking about water runoff with all of this and the parking lots and whatnot, where's that going? And if it's going on land that doesn't hurt as it is, does that ruin my land at the same time? Well, my problem is, in all instances, for me, is I don't have a lot of opportunity to, I don't have any choices here. I have somebody that's saying they're going to come in and change the way, wants to change the way it's zoned, wants to change what's going on with the land next to me. I have no opportunity, I have no choice. Nobody's telling me whether, is my property value going to go down? Because we all believe it will. And I'm right beside it. I'm a single mom, like I mentioned at the last meeting. I don't have the opportunity to just get up and leave. But at the same time, I chose this area because it was rural. I chose the area knowing, leaving the city, knowing that I had to drive farther to go to a store. Knowing that, you know, there was nothing around me or nothing close to me, that I had to go to do that. And that was fine with me. That's what my choice was. If I want to live near everything like it is here, near the Walmart, near whatever stores there are, then I would move to the city or I would have lived and chose the city. I didn't. I chose that for that reason. Not to have somebody just make a choice and bring in a big company like that, whether the building is small or not, to an area that is technically rural area. I agree with what everybody here that's opposed to this, I agree with it. So, I don't need to tell you again about, you know, what those big companies are doing, what Dollar General is doing to these little areas that they're putting their stores in. We all know it's really about them making a profit. But one thing I just want to say while I was sitting here, and unfortunately, I don't have my glasses, so I'm just going to paraphrase a couple of things. He mentioned that he didn't realize there was any crime in Randolph County around the Dollar Generals. Yes, there's crime everywhere. No, but we'd be foolish to say there wasn't. But to say that there's not any that you know of around Randolph County around Dollar Generals or related to John Generals is kind of crazy when, just on Facebook, the Randolph County Sheriff's Office Facebook page. I got one here that I just pulled up in the past few minutes, in the past few years. Here's one, received a report of a robbery on the one-on-sixty-two. Here's another one, robbery of a Dollar General, possible convenience store in two-twenty Business. And there was another one, I can't see it, in Seagrove, which that's Randolph County, it's not near me, but it's near somebody, I'm sure. One on Seagrove. Here's one about drugs around, in the parking lot on Hillsville Road. Here's another one about... This one was about somebody in the store and then feeling uncomfortable in the store and then going out and the person followed them out to their car. I mean, there's just, it goes on and on. And I was actually looking for a specific one that I thought something happened to the one on sixty-four in our area. But I just didn't see it. And I found all these other ones. So, really, that kind of is not exactly a truthful statement, in my opinion, to say something like that in relation to there not being any crime or wonder why there's crime. Yeah, there's crime to the people that could be working in the store, but nine times out of ten, those people are going to leave the store and they're going to do what? Hopefully not, you know, go in my backyard or go wherever in my house or whatever to get away from while they're running or doing whatever they're doing, causing crime. Again, I am a single mom. I have a child at home. I have pets at home. I'd like that to stay safe. I'd like it to stay just like everybody else feels, like, you know, you're supposed to be doing in your community. If somebody needs help, you go help them. If something happens, it's there. You don't want to feel like, I'm not ever coming out of my house again because of what might happen next door or whatever might happen. But if you, another thing is if you, traffic, if you can say or not say that that's not going to be affected, traffic is crazy. People do not do the speed limit on that road. One-hundred percent do not do the speed limit. And you're going to put something in there on like they're saying a blind curve and it really is. That's going to be a danger. I mean, I hate it for people, you know, that don't have the choice when they're affected by this. And you guys have that choice to say, you know, look, we're going to keep certain things. I agree with, with building things up. I agree with continue on. This is going to happen. Progress is always going to happen. I know that. But I think there are certain areas you should be able to keep the way they are. I'm not saying you can't have progress, but I'm saying as in like big businesses and things like that coming in. I just think that's unfortunate. Another point that I have... Excuse me. A lot of times in these Dollar Generals, I don't, I mean, I know why they do it, but it's unfortunate when you see, they start to, at first, they're building, they look nice, like the one they just put up was on forty-two. Looks nice, decent. Everybody's got everything all neat. But if you do one that's been there five years or whatever, let's do the one on sixty-two, you go there now, and it's trashy. There's cardboard everywhere. There's this racks. Everybody knows about the Dollar General and the racks outside that they push the whole cardboard in, where they've got way too much product in because they just want to shove it on the shelves. It just starts to get really trashy. Then you start to, all that trash is going to add up to extra animals being around, to just things like that hanging around. It's a trash runoff. I get a lot of trash in my yard now, just from people throwing it out the window. So, you're going to add more if they're coming in to that, to sit there and just trash up the neighborhood even further. And like he said, no, I'm not going to Dollar General. Definitely not. And if you're talking about people that live there, I've got two, three family members now that live on Racetrack Road that won't go there. And these are all people in the area. So, I don't necessarily think that you can say specifically that Dollar General is servicing that area. Because what's servicing that area right now, if you have to have something, is the gas station. They have, I've never, probably, very few times have I ever had a problem not finding something in that gas station. That I didn't, that I couldn't just suffice me for the night until I went again some... again somewhere else, or whatever. But that's all I needed, because that's the way I chose to live. And again, like I said, it kind of forces me, I don't have a choice, I can't leave, I can't afford to. So I'm stuck with whatever you guys say, whatever Dollar General ends up doing to my neighborhood and to my value of my property, because I'm not gonna have a choice, there's nothing I can do to fight it, other than this. And like I said, everything everybody said here tonight, I don't think I need to repeat a lot of it, because you already know. But I do think that, you know, it's personal. It's personal to me, but it's also, I don't think it services the community, like everybody's trying to say, that's what the Dollar Generals are there to do. I just don't think it's servicing the community.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak before we close, well, we give the opportunity to answer any of the questions? Any anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name's Stephanie Ward.
Speak up to the mic a little bit.
My name is Stephanie Ward, I'm at 1532 Old County Farm Road, which is very close, I could walk to that corner. I support the gas station, and they have milk and things that I possibly might need We moved there a couple of years ago, just two years we've been there. We bought property there, about 12 acres, and built a home there to, for that purpose of being out in the country. In that rural area, it's very beautiful with the mountain there, and, you know, we had plans to retire there, we have grown children, almost empty nesters. We're hopefully gonna do some farming, we've already started some farming there, and, you know, but with this happening, we might not stay. Because of that, we don't want it to grow. The purpose of moving there was, you know, for the area of it being rural and not all grown up, like, if we wanted to live in a city, we would've, you know, lived there. We have on our property some natural springs and creeks, and we have, like, Lucas right there nearby, that we like to go kayaking, and so the environmental aspects of this area is important to me and my property. I don't want it to be, go down in value, that's been talked about already, but I don't, you know, I worry about the pollution with the trash and, you know, rodents in the area as well, and also I worry about the crime too, that's already been said. And the drugs, I mean, I don't want, you know, clientele coming to that area, and I worry about safety for my family. So most of the things have already been said, but I, you know, agree with all those people that stood up here and everything that they said, and I didn't have anything planned, I just came because I wanted to support this cause. And I don't want any more congestion in that area, I already have problems with anxiety and stress, and I, we don't want that in the area. I want peace and serenity is what I want in where I live, with my family and my animals and things. Thank you for your time.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Okay. Folks with the application, if you'd like to address any of the issues that you choose to, and any questions or issues that have been brought before the board tonight, we welcome your input.
I don't really have that much to add. I feel like what I said at the beginning kind of encompasses pretty much what everyone talked about. If you have any specific questions, you know, I'd be happy to answer. Kind of do want to touch on a couple of things. There was some discussion about the choice of the foods that the Dollar General sells. There is a really big push into fresh foods, that is spreading out through the chain. I really wanted to reiterate that the discussion about crime in the stores, and, I mean, I just, I don't think anybody in this room thinks that this area has high crime rate. And I totally agree with that, but we just don't believe that these stores bring crime to the area. If there's crime in the area, they may be robbed, but if, it didn't sound like the gas station has had problems. I've just never seen, I've built a lot of these stores, and we hear about them all the time, I just have not, we've built some stores in some rougher areas, and they may have had an issue, but we build a lot of rural locations, be much more rural than this. And I just do not believe that crime is gonna be an issue here, especially not caused by the store. I understand that a lot of people here don't want it, don't want to shop there, but I think there's a lot of people that aren't here, based on the data the market planning group has put together, that would shop there and would be supporters of the store. So if anybody else has anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Any question? I do have one, I know there was concern about the number of vehicles increased in traffic. Do you have, I know this may be confidential information, do you have a number of vehicles that would...
Trips a day.
Trips per day, or something like that?
You know, the DOT has never, we've built 200 of these stores, and the trips that this store generates does not generate a traffic impact analysis. So that usually means less than 200, and 200 a day. But that's people that's living, that are living in the area. If you look at the traffic volume on the roads, trips, that is far less than the traffic on the road.
Staff can reiterate, in your packets, do T R C evaluation, D O T send it when they note where it's needed for this project.
Right, right. The first thing we do is we talk to D O T to see what, because that's the big cost in these projects, and we've built plenty of turn lanes, so if they wanted it, we would build it. But when they say that the traffic volume of this Kerewee Mountain Road doesn't even generate a turn lane, that kind of tells you how many trips that's gonna provide or generate.
Mr. Vaniers, if I could ask, and I think this was a little bit confusing at the previous meeting, to answer Mrs. Van Canon's question, she, apparently, the driveway that's out there now, her question was, is the existing buffer that's shown on this site map right now, is that the existing driveway that's there now? That's the question I understood her to ask. Whoever can answer that question?
Based on the survey that we obtained and the aerial data, as you can see here, there is no driveway in that location. Just to the left and north, if you were looking at the plan, maybe 300, 400 feet would be her gravel driveway, which I believe is she is questioning. But that is not portrayed on this screen in our buffer, or the site is not on that existing gravel driveway. The one that we would be made aware of, there's nothing there.
Okay, all right. So that would answer her question number one and two, is the buffer the driveway? And then her second question was, where is the driveway as it's reflected in relation to that map? And you're saying it's...
It's off the map.
300, 400 feet to the north, okay. And the last question that she asked, Ms. Van Canon asked, if the land does not perk, what about runoff? Are you familiar with the topography of this land? And do you know anything about where runoff would be?
Two separate issues. Perking would deal with the septic capacity of the soil to take in and disperse the septic. Perking is that. As far as stormwater runoff, that's infiltration, which we don't have any issue with, any soils in Randolph County with that, we all absorb pretty well. So perking's a different issue than stormwater runoff. And to address stormwater runoff, this is not in a watershed, it's protected by Randolph County, so we are abiding by all watershed regulations on our particular site.
Can you, for the benefit of this board, can you describe what that means a little bit, and also, obviously, for the audience?
As a design engineer, we have a responsibility to not immediately sheet runoff right into the neighbor.
Right.
We run into situations where the ordinance does not protect the neighbor. Randolph County has a watershed ordinance that does protect neighbors to certain degrees, and also in greater degrees within certain protected watershed areas. More prone to flooding, drinking waters, things of that nature are protected more. In this site, there is adequate overland dispersion. We have runoff on all sides. We've got ditch runoff on the front, topography allows for runoff to shed in the rear, and that basically infiltration is a natural process that we allow to runoff our site, and no stormwater control measure would be required or even necessary on this site. There is a sheet within this plan set that does have a small temporary sediment basin, and that is, of course, to protect the immediate areas during the construction phase. A sediment pond will be installed, diversion ditches will be running to that area so that the downstream jurisdictional waters, we saw the wetland map, you saw the existing pond there, all of that will be protected from runoff from our site.
Where would that temporary sediment pond be located?
There you go. On the driveway side, you've got a driveway entrance, noted there's temporary construction entrance. Just below that, there's a bunch of contours that kind of circle, making a depression in the ground there. There's core fiber baffle, skimmer basin, all of that's required by the state. Temporary diversions run both directions from that, bringing water to it.
And what agency oversees that?
Department of Environmental Quality.
Okay. And would that pond remain after construction?
That is a temporary sediment basin, so no permanent structures required on this site.
Okay. And I think I heard you mention that it was suitable for septic and well water...
Correct.
But permits, that's with the health...
They're in the process of being obtained.
But that hadn't been obtained, so...
Correct.
You'll have to have those before.
Yes.
Well, I guess, obviously, the land perks, or you wouldn't still be here.
Yes. We've got an active design in hand for the soils that are on site. The footage of the pipe shown, actually, on the bottom of this page, the dark black lines there, that will be the septic layout in relation to where the building is.
Any other questions?
I have two or three, just, give me a little leeway here. DMN Properties now own the property. Is that correct? So DMN Properties are the property owners, it says here on this paper anyway.
They have the contract to sell.
And they have the contract to sell it. Okay. The other thing is, it's, that whole tract is 9.52 acres. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. You're asking for the zoning to apply to only 2.2 out of the other. My question is, what are plans, if any, for the other 7.3 acres that you own of that tract?
We're just purchasing the 2.2, the rest is gonna remain with the owner of DMN Properties, and I don't know what he's doing.
Do you guys have any plans at this time?
Okay, so DMN would still own the other part for whatever there is, okay. I want, thanks for giving me the allowance with that, because I was a little confused as to exactly what it is you're asking for in that, so that answers my question there.
You said you had two or three, is that just, two or three, is that your one?
Well, that was probably two or three.
Okay, all right. No one will short you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I just wanted to ask about...
Speak to the microphone.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I wanted to ask about the signage, because I've noticed recently with some of the freestanding stores, that the signage across the front is not as high as it has been in the past. Am I correct? Is this just me noticing this? Or, you know, in the past, for older stores, I would see, you know, all the way across the front, the big sign, and now I've noticed a smaller, you know, a smaller sign right across the front.
Mr. Vaniers, if you don't mind answering up here, because we're recording this.
Typically, so, we develop the stores, they bring in their own sign companies, and they go through the proper permitting...
Right.
...procedures. I'm assuming that the smaller signs are because the municipality's requiring them to do them smaller.
Okay. So that would be up to us?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. That would be, whatever your sign regulations say.
Okay.
And that would be a totally separate permitting process that they would come in after, but it has no bearing on this yet.
Right, right, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we'll invite discussion amongst the board. Any thoughts or comments that you might have regarding the application and rezoning? I'm somewhat familiar with the area right out there yesterday and looked at it. I know, as an adjacent landowner to developing myself, the concerns of the community, so I empathize with that. But also, have the property owner's right to do what he wants to with his property within the guidelines of what the accounting ordinances are. I know there's been a little concern about traffic, I specifically asked about that, because there is a slight curve in the road there in front of, for the location, and I was concerned about, you know, we're always concerned about the sight distance and that kind of thing, but it is, the driveway looks like it would be, have right much sight distance between both left and right, just about, because it's kind of an apex of that corner. So that is not a bigger concern as I would normally might be in some other situations. I don't want to get into an issue, I don't think it's our job here to make decisions on corporate policies and whatnot, although it does impact our public services in some instances. But I don't want to be judgmental on how someone runs their company unless it impacts the surrounding community. And there's been a lot of information, I do appreciate the packet that was compiled for us, with the information very detailed, and I can say, that I read through it yesterday afternoon, and, but it is, that's a little bit sometimes out of our purview. We have to go by what the regulations, what our growth management plan is, and what the guidelines are within our zoning. So, you know, looking at this, we just can't deny something just because the community doesn't want it. Even though that is, you know, something that, again, I empathize with, I live in a community that didn't want development in that area. But we're having to deal with noise and issues in my specific area, so, like I say, I empathize with that. But this is an area that, you know, there are Dollar Generals throughout the area. I mentioned down Highway 22, down Highway 22 and Bennett Highway 42. So, you know, I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are, but, you know, I don't have any huge issues with this rezoning.
I have to, I have to speak up, because I do live in the area. I live, I don't know, May... And I am sorry that someone thinks our planning board members lack intellectual curiosity, because that's not true. They spend a lot of time on these issues. I have the utmost respect for them, whether I agree with them or not, when something comes to me, because of the time they put in. My late husband hated zoning issues. He hated them, because every time you come, some people leave happy, and some people leave angry. And now I understand why he felt that way. I'm an avid outdoorsman. I'd rather be outdoors anytime than indoors. I want the countryside to remain the same. I don't want it to change. I regularly go out to Caraway or Munda Vista and do some hiking. But that has already, the zoning has already changed in that area. This is not the first commercial plan, and we already have commercial there in the market. We're, we, we don't control competition that comes and goes. And per Commissioner Allen's comments, citizens seem to think that because you don't like something, that we can disallow it. So what if a, what if somebody wants to open a small business selling produce? Or what if somebody wants to open a small mom and pop hardware store? You like those better?
Amen.
I mean, I do, too. But guess what? That's discriminatory, and we can be sued, we set ourselves up for lawsuits when we do that. We're not even really supposed to ask the name of what's coming. If, 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 if something meets the parameters that are in place, then we have to give it all equal consideration. And I know you don't like that. I don't like that either, but that's the way it is. I've lived out there for 45 years, and gone back and forth through that intersection. So I do know the area well. And I see that it's consistent with the growth management plan. I see that it is consistent with the secondary growth area, which says that there are major subdivisions scattered between agricultural and commercial, which is what's there exactly. It's consist, it's, I just, I see that, it's consistent. I totally understand why there were planning board members that voted against it the first time, because the site plan that was brought was a terrible site plan. And when you approve that site plan, then you're kind of stuck with that. So they voted against it, given the incomplete site plan, and I think that's wise for those that did so. But we have a solid site plan now, with a, you know, with a good buffer in place. And I feel like it's, I feel like it's consistent.
I would make the comment that this, this is conditional district, so-
Yes.
With any changes, this is what's going there. It's not just any, you know, type of retail, it's very specific, so that is, oftentimes in these situations, it's, I don't know what the type of, what particular business is going there, but this is very specific, it has to be this, this type of retail.
And only the 2.2 acres is being asked to be rezoned. So if something were to want to come around the corner on the, on that property that's on Green Farm, then they would have to come back through this process.
Any other comments?
My comments are, that's the reason I asked that question specifically about who owned it, what they're doing, what they were doing with it, because 2.2 is all that's asked for here, and that's all, all we really are being asked-
Right.
-to adjudicate on. And I appreciate your comments there, and, and from David's comments, I too, and one, that was on the planning board and didn't get what I wanted either. So I can sympathize with you. Mr. Attorney over there knows what I'm talking about.
Twice, twice, Maxton.
Twice. Twice. Exactly right.
Heard about that, too.
Yeah. So that was, that was-
Speak to the microphone.
Excuse me. That was, I can, I can understand what you're talking about. It's, it's not an easy decision to make, because, again, I, I understand where the people are coming from exactly, and have felt that way many times before.
Okay. Anything you want to add, Keith?
In the respect for everybody's time, I feel like I'd be beating a dead horse, but I would like to say I do appreciate Commissioner Haywood's comments about our planning board, so I won't reiterate that, but thank you.
Well, they do a thankless task as far as, you know, the, the compensation certainly does not match the time and effort that goes into that.
Yeah.
So we appreciate what they do, whether we agree with their decisions.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we need, I need to defend us, but I think I rarely speak for the whole board, but I'll say this, including our member who's not here, I know all five of us are very familiar with that site. We've been out there, we drive past it all the time, we're familiar with the area, we spent time doing homework, just like our planning board, so I hope everybody respects that. These are not things that we just get a package and don't read it and vote on something, we're not, you know, had done some homework on.
Yeah. Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, it's in my district. So I make the motion to approve this rezoning request, to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application and the map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based upon the determination of consistency and findings of reasonableness and public interest statements that are included in the planning board agenda, submitted during the zoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as the site plan, with any and all agreed upon revisions, also incorporated into the motion, and that the request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second, go ahead.
He can read it.
Whichever.
You have to read it, Max.
Need to read it. Got it.
Starting right there. In making a second to the motion, please say, I make the second, I'll get it. I second the motion to approve this rezoning request, to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application and the map amendment ordinance to the requested zoning district based on the determination of consistency and findings of reasonableness and public interest statements that are included in the planning board agenda, submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as the site plan, with any and all agreed upon revisions, also incorporated into the motion, and that the request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
Any further discussion before we go? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, that concludes our meeting. I'll ask for a motion adjourned.
Motion.
We're supposed to have a copy of your development plan. We want to talk on one community and for the two, for sure.
Before we, tell me, you can come and talk-